Good evening, everyone. Sorry about we had a little bit of technical difficulty. So we're just changing things up a little bit this evening. The meeting of the Hingham School Committee is called to order. It is 6:39 on October 6, 2025. This meeting is being held remotely or in person as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of Acts of 2025 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all other communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording the meeting other than Harvard Media? Please let us know. Great. All right. Tonight, I am joined by my colleagues John Mooney, Matt Cosman, Tim Miller Dempsey, Carrie Nie, Ally Anderson, and Michelle Eyre. And I will move on to our first order of business, which is approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes from September 29. Are there any discussion or comments on that?
A couple of really minor typos. For the, under the school improvement plan for East, it says highlighting the goals and achievements itself instead of these. And then, if you wouldn't mind just changing, correcting the spelling of my name. It's our executive session call.
This is what happens when Sherri's away.
Yeah. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other?
She's live.
All right. I will take a motion. Take a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee of September 29, 2025.
All right, we'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I post? All right. Minutes are approved. We will move on to questions and comments. This is the portion of the meeting that we have set aside. Let's take question and comments on items that are unrelated to items on our agenda. If there's anyone in the audience or anyone online with a comment or question, if so, please raise your hand now, and I will be happy to recognize you. That includes anyone on Zoom. Not seeing.
Diane Tenaply.
Oh, Diane Tenaply. All right. Hold on one second, Diane. I have to read this statement, so hold on one second. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the School Committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If guests wish to speak, please raise your hand, state your name and address, and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of the responsibility of the School Committee as established by Mass. General Law. The responsibilities of the School Committee are to, one, establish, are to select and evaluate superintendent, to review and approve budgets for public education in the district, and, three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the School Committee. The School Committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during public comment period. In addition to this public comment period, the School Committee practice provides, excuse me, the School Committee practice provides time for questions and comments from the public on new business items on the agenda. And at this time, Diane, you may unmute yourself. Not sure why I have an echo. I am muted.
I unmuted. Oh, there she is. Call around.
Jen, I'm sorry. Did you just call me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Diane Tenaply, 16 Gardnershire. I just wanted to let you know we didn't have any sound, but it seems like that's been corrected. So, thank you.
Great, great. Thank you, Diane.
It is still feedback, though. I don't know if that's me or everyone.
I believe that's everyone. We're going to get that worked out.
Okay.
Thank you. There we go. How's that? Is that better, Diane?
So they can't hear you now.
That's a problem.
So we have to have the feedback? Just so you know it's been.
Okay.
Try now.
Diane, could you raise your hand on the camera if you can hear us?
It still sounds very echoey.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, thank you. So I think the issue is that we either have an echo or we have no audio.
Well, I think it's important for everyone to hear us. I think we'll go with the echo.
We'll go with the echo. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. That's a lot of echoing.
Make sure it's a short one.
All right. Good. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? They can't hear you right now, and we can't record this this way because it's just too echoey.
Okay.
Hang on, try now.
Let's do a try.
Hang on, try now.
Try. Can anyone hear me on the Zoom right now? If you can, could you please raise your hand?
Yes, you're good.
All right, great. Thank you, Diane. Excellent. Thank you, Harvard Media, for working through that with us. Okay. There's no one in the audience or no one on Zoom that has any comments or questions for items that are not on tonight's agenda. We will move on to Agenda Item 4, which is our Superintendent's Report.
Terrific. Thank you, Jen. So the month of October is National Principals Month, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our HPS principals for their leadership, dedication, and impact on students. Principals need to be strong communicators, creative problem solvers, and skillful collaborators, and we are grateful to have six examples of such leadership in action in Hingham. Thank you to Principals Boning, Haas, LaMoth, Scheifley, Smith, and Bucky. Wanted to next to thank Erica Pollard, our Assistant Superintendent, for her work in leading the first in a series of caregiver conversations intended to provide families with an opportunity to engage in topics of interest. Last month, Erica hosted a session on digital and Internet safety and reviewed a range of resources of interest to families to support their children in the era of AI and digital natives. During the month of October, we will welcome author Lisa Demore, who will share strategies from her bestselling book, The Emotional Life of Teenagers, and we hope that many in the community will join us on Thursday, October 23, at 6:30 PM in the middle school auditorium for that very timely presentation. On a similar vein, each year, the Hingham Middle School hosts presentations for students on the topic of digital safety. This October, we're pleased to welcome back the Plymouth County DA, who will share a cyber sense presentation with our grade eight students. And HMS will also welcome the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center, also known as MARC, for a presentation to our sixth and seventh grade students on the topic of cyberbullying. Last week, the Hingham Historical Society hosted the HPS Social Studies Department at the Hingham Heritage Museum to view the new exhibit, Witness: Hingham in the Age of the Revolution. We continue to be grateful for this years-long partnership between the Historical Society and HPS to enrich our educators and students. And later this week, all grade 11 students will also visit the exhibit as part of their 11th grade U.S. history curriculum. We hope that many in the community will join us for the homecoming festivities coming up at Hingham High School this weekend. The event will include the much-loved annual sale of Hingham swag, at the annual Homecoming Sale, which supports high school clubs and activities. So come support our student athletes and clubs. And finally, just to save the date for the Hingham Arts Walk, which this year will be on October 19. Each year, Hingham High Music and Drama students take the stage at the Hingham Arts Walk, and it's not to be missed, so we will be featuring the HHS Band kicking off at noon, along with a sneak peek of the upcoming musical production at the high school known as The Drowsy Chaperone. So thanks to our students for sharing their talents with the community in this way.
Great. Thank you very much for that update. We will move on to item number five, which is Communications. Any communications received by the Superintendent? Any communications received by our student, which is, she's not with us this evening? And then, other communications from the School Committee? Does anyone have anything?
I just had one. We did receive a letter from a community member asking about military requirements at the high school. So I did respond to her, but she had some concerns about changes to military requirements, and I just was wondering what the policies were.
Thank you for responding to her. Appreciate that. All right. Moving on to item six, which is unfinished business. We do have one item list on our agenda, which we're going to table for this evening. So moving on to new business, which, item 7.1, which is to receive a presentation of the entry plan for Executive Director of Student Services.
And before we turn the mic over to Dr. Panerisi, I just wanted to say how thrilled we are to have her onboard. She's only been with us about 90 days, and is already making an impact, and we are so grateful to have her here. So this evening, Chris will be providing an update on her first 90 days, and we'll be sharing the next steps ahead. So I'll pass it over to you, Chris.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Chris Panerisi. I'd like to thank Katie and Erica and Ayesha for helping guide this process. When I was doing all the data digging and asking thousands of questions, they were always right there and never really got exhausted of me pestering them, so I really appreciate that. The entry plan includes the time that I spent at the district before I actually came and landed here on July 1, as well as the 90 days from when I started. And so if I look at the table of contents, it includes these data collections of the pre-entry visits and the listening sessions that I have with different stakeholders throughout the district, the Mass. Department of Education's profiles for the district, the RADI data, external data collection, and snapshots of the Office of Student Services at the district level, and then what does it look like at the school level. I've been visiting all of the schools. I've met with all of the principals initially, and I continue to support at the schools, mostly at the middle school and the high school right now, because we don't have somebody there, so I spend more, a lot of my time there. But Charlene also goes to the elementary schools. I'm going to review a little bit of the initial action steps and then what it's going to look like for the next 90 days. So I looked at developing the goals and actions for the first 30 days just from the initial listening sessions that I had before I came. There was a clear understanding that relationships and trust was paramount, and it needed some improvement. So throughout those listening sessions, that was the theme that we had collected. When I looked at observation and assessment, I looked at daily walkthroughs, a weekly walkthrough information, I looked at all the referral information, I looked at student data across Student Services, and the communication and transparency, both on the family side as well as the educator side. Both sides felt like we really needed transparency with communications, consistent communication, and to have that communication reach down to the school level as well as to extend to the parents. And they also asked for some collaborative leadership, to be able to have curriculum leadership teams in ELA and math, and I extend, and I work with our ELA and math department heads at the high school that go K-12, and to look at some research-based initiatives with regards to the MTSS process and how we can monitor students' progress, whether or not they're on an IEP or not. So the first thing we did is we started with a vision, and the vision really reflects my core values. And so I usually don't read from slides, but I am going to read this one. It's posted to our website, and it says, "The Hingham Office of Student Services embraces a philosophy to provide high-quality, individualized, inclusive learning opportunities where all children with disabilities and their families experience belonging and a shared sense of responsibility in the development and education of their child so that they can reach their fullest potential in life." I have kept that core value throughout my career, and I'm really proud to be able to be here at Hingham to be able to continue that core value. So there's different types of data buckets. I looked at some national data because while I'm gathering the district data, you want to compare it to what does the national data look like for that same type of indicator, and then what does the state look like for that same type of indicator? So you're going to see some of those comparisons as I go through the RADI, the profiles, and what we have in ASPEN, and just what was collected informally in the district. First, I looked at the Student Services and said, who are the people that are servicing the schools? Who are the administrators that are servicing the schools? And really, what is the Office of Student Services in Hingham? So we go with the special education, which is what most people actually associate the Office of Student Services with. We looked at related services, Section 504, counseling, nursing, integrated preschool, team chairs, English language learners, McKinney-Vento homeless, Zmetco, and Title IX. That actually is inclusive of all the responsibilities in Office of Student Services. I tried to really make a nice flow chart, but it didn't come out really pretty, so I settled for this. We have myself as the Executive Director, Liz O'Neill as the Assistant, and Charlene Fabrizio as the Administrator of Elementary Special Education, Rebecca Dayton, who is a new hire, is our Nursing Manager, Heather Rodriguez, Director of Counseling, and Sarah Chick. And I meet with each one of these people minimally each week, if not twice a week. So the pre-entry data collection, it's a thorough review of all of the data that I talked about before, looking at the state level, looking at the federal level, and the stakeholder groups that I met with beforehand, they were in district stakeholder groups, school administrators, general education teachers, special education teachers, parents, guardians, students, which I loved, and central office personnel and CPAC members as well. I met with each one of them and had some listening sessions. They asked questions. I answered them as best that I could. And really, people wanted to know, you know, what was going to be different about my administration and Student Services and what was I going to do for Hingham? So we talked about the different things, and again, I shared my vision and I shared my core values, and people seemed to be responsive to that, and that was always a good thing. It made me feel very good about that. I also looked at the program visits and our enrollment in the different types of programs. We had to make a couple of adjustments during the summertime, a little bit of last minute, but it was for the benefit of the children, so it was fine. I looked at the ESY programming and what we were doing there, and we kind of enhanced it a little bit because some of our students that are on credit recovery at the high school, they have an online credit recovery process that they use, but a lot of our kids on IEPs don't have the executive functioning skills to really be successful with that online learning, so they do need some support. So what we did is we incorporated that in the ESY as a drop-in service so that children could come in that were on credit recovery courses, get the guidance they need, get somewhat of a structure to be able to go online and complete that. So we're really happy that we're able to offer that at the ESY. And then we looked at the new priorities. Again, the idea of trustful, transparent communication was really a theme throughout all of that. So when we looked at the listening sessions, I'm not going to read off the slide because you can see that, but these are just the different data points and data indicators that I've looked at. We look at the achievement level. We look at the enrollment. We look at how the department actually gave us a score for our last CHAMP's evaluation, or what we used to call the TFM. We looked at different students' placements based on their disability. I looked at IEPs by grade level and the content of the IEPs by grade level, and of course, the district spending and how special education is actually funded. I looked at the strategic plans. I was part of the new strategic plan. We have embedded the ideas of IDEA and all the concepts of IDEA into the actual plan for our own district. The MUNIS data, again, for the spending, the budget, the management, the grants, policies, and some other information. One of the big pieces of data that I felt was necessary to kind of take a look at is the historical data on students with disabilities. And if we look at 2021, it was 13.6% of all the students that attend Hingham Public Schools are students with disabilities on IEPs. If we look over to 2025, and that doesn't include this fiscal year, this is last year, is 18.6. It's actually a little bit higher right now because there's a discrepancy between the ASPEN and the October 4th, because as you know, special education is a dynamic process. We always keep moving and moving. We do take children off of IEPs that, you know, are okay, and they don't have, they have built those compensatory services, and they don't realize, they don't really need the specialized instruction anymore. That is not as often as we put children on IEPs, and so therefore, there's a discrepancy. So that's quite a bit of a change within five years. And if you look at the 2021 date, that's after COVID. So I looked at the different programs. We have an integrated preschool. We have a new director of the integrated preschool. That's at the foster school. We have our RISE programs, which really supports our students with autism at the South, Middle, and High. CLC program for our students with different types of diversity, but East, Middle, and High. The Language Base, which is usually for our dyslexic students, that is over at the East and Middle. The Pathways Program at the high school, and the Bridgewater State University Excel Partner Program for our transition students. The enrollment trend, when we look at the enrollment trend comparisons, again, grabbing those 2021 and 2025 snapshot, historical snapshot, we look at the enrollment. As the enrollment actually was decreasing, the special education ratios were going up. And then when I look at the disability snapshot of who are these children that are increasing, we can see that the SLD, which is common and on the national standard as well as being the most prevalent learning disability. Then if we looked at the state, autism was the second most common, but for us, it was communication. And I tend to think that that might be a categorization of ASPEN and how people actually added those codes into ASPEN. And then health and neurological. So the state had health. That's usually where ADHD goes underneath. Some of our team chairs are using ADHD under the neurological piece. So that might be the explanation there. I'd have to dig a little bit deeper on that. When we look at the classroom placements, there's some really good news here. We said that those were an inclusive placement in 2021 to 22. 67% remained in the inclusive. They did not have to transition to a substantially separate setting. But of the substantially separate settings in 2021, 75% remained there, and they didn't transition to the inclusion setting, which means that most of the students that were in the sub-separate setting remained in the sub-separate setting. So that's something else that I have to look into to say, you know, what is it that our children need in the inclusion setting, and what are the indicators that we would use to say that a child is ready to transition to a partial inclusion setting at the very least? Because having a least restrictive environment is a compliance and a mandate. One of the things that our district is going to be graded on this year, and they don't normally do this, but they are, is they're going to be taking a look at the student achievement in the gaps. When we look at the student achievement gap of meeting or exceeding expectations on ELA grades three to eight, this would be the elementary schools up to our middle school, we can see that students without a disability, we have that 85% meeting or exceeding, but then when we look at our students with disabilities, it's 35%, and that gap is huge. If we look at the trend of the gap, we do see that in 2022, we took a dip, and I'm going to assume that is for, that was for our COVID break and our students' slow recoupment of their skills. And then we inched our way up, but we can see that that gap is still there in 2024. So the state expects us to close that gap as much as we can. So that's another area that we really have to take a look at to see what strategies and what things we can do to close that gap. When we look at the student growth, there's some really good news here. So we started with the student growth in 2021 of 43.7%, but as you can see, 2024 is 54.2, and general education students are 60.9. So although there's a gap, it's really, it's not that bad of a gap, and it's really something to be proud of. Our students are growing, they are learning, and we just need to see how we can really accelerate that and move that, make sure every child reaches their fullest potential. When we look at the student achievement in mathematics, we started out with 27% meeting or exceeding, and then in 2024, we jumped to 41%, which is pretty good. That's excellent. But math is easier to recoup because it's very structured, and you can really move math along a lot quicker than you can the ELA piece. When we look at 2024 for our students without disabilities, it's 81. While the gap is large, it's not as large as if we looked at the ELA component. When we looked at the math growth scores, this is another thing we can be very proud of. Math growth scores for students with disability was 52.1. For students without disabilities, it was 53.1. So our students are learning and growing at a very good pace, very close to their non-disabled When we look at the science achievement, again, we see that gap. We see a big dip in 2023, but then in 2024, we are moving up. So we expect that this year hopefully will be another one, and Erica Pollard will be delivering that piece of information. When we look at ELA for grade 10, and this is important for a couple of reasons, because this is where, you know, the entire story for students with a disability, this is the outcome we're looking for. Although our kids can go to school until age 22, when we look at the achievement level of ELA for grade 10, meeting or exceeding 38% of students on IEPs are meeting and exceeding. Their non-disabled peers, 86. And so we can see a decline here. And so again, it's another area to look at. Are our kids in inclusion being exposed to grade-level modified curriculum? Is there enough rigor? What's, who are the students taking these tests, and do they have enough accommodations? Those are all things that you drill down and look at the data, and that's the next 90 days. When we look at math, we do see some growth from 2021. I mean, we go from 14 to 31%, but it's still far below the students without disabilities. We can see in 2023, we kind of crept up, and then in 2024, that gap widens again. When we look at the science, we regressed a little bit there, and again, far below that of the students without disabilities. So when we look at our accountability for this year, or the year that we checked in 2025, we see that the high school didn't meet their target on ELA achievement. They have low ELA growth. The target is not met, and they declined in math, but they did exceed the typical growth, which is great. Science achievement not met for students with disabilities. The dropout rate, fine, they met their target rate that the state gave us. The chronic absenteeism, and again, this may have to do with the achievement when we drill down, target not met and declined. When we look at the K to eight, we can see that we've met the target in achievement. We have high growth, met the target in math, high growth. Science met the target. We don't measure growth because it's grade five and eight there. Dropout rate isn't something that we would look at for this grade level, and they exceeded their target in really just making sure that kids are in school and they have the ability to learn, and they're exposed to the curriculum. When we look at the weight of points, I'm sorry. That's going to be Slide 23?
I'm sorry.
Yep. It's all right. I get to rest. 76% of all the points that we could earn for special education, we did earn for the K to eight grade-level band. When we look at the high school, we only got 30% of all the points that we could have. And the graduate, graduation rate for students with disability did decline. This is the annual accountability for students with disabilities. Again, right down below where that arrow is, it says weight of non-high school results, and this does take into consideration 2025, and then weight of high school results. So even for 2025, we still see that same trend with the elementary schools up to grade eight are meeting the state benchmarks that they have, they give us, but the high school is kind of floundering. They're not making those, so we'll have to pay a little bit more attention as to why and really get some interventions there. So again, you heard me talk about the first 30 days. These are the trends that we saw, that trustful relations, school-based supervision, and consistent supervision at the district level for area of Student Services. The high school students were satisfied. The high school students were satisfied. High school students that I interviewed with their IEPs were satisfied with their education. But they did want to know more involvement in their own IEP processes. So that's something that we can train our team chairs on. They did, a lot of the high school teachers, whether or not they were special education teachers or student services or they were general education, they did want professional development in laws, accommodations, modifications and scaffolding. And some of the teachers did, did state that they did not have enough support staff for the increasingly complex IEPs to ensure FAP and the MassDSE compliance. Right now, we are staffed according that, that we're supposed to. Every student's IEP is being met. But we never know when somebody is going to be out for long term or short term. And we try to fix that with contracting services. So our structure for the Office of Student Services planning, using data-driven processes to set those goals. What does the data tell us? And how do we make those smart goals? How are we going to create those smart goals? How are we going to develop the objectives of what I call indicators? And how are we going to measure them? And then do I have enough resources when I make that strategic plan? And identify any potential obstacles that may come in, come in play? So that's another area when we, when we make the strategic planning. And then that measurement tool. We always make strategic plans. We have the action steps, but we forget to measure. And then go back, if that measurement does not really play out the way we thought it would, go back and readjust and create another plan that works. Don't just leave it. And so that's always been my philosophy. I'm, if it's ugly and I have the strategic plan and it doesn't come out right on one of the steps, I'm okay with that because I'm going to fix it. It's another piece of information. I'm not just going to sit there and, and just kind of let it ride. I'm going to fix it, be transparent and move on for success. This is a little bit blurry. I apologize for the next slide. Even though I did it in Excel and cut and paste it for some reason, when it transferred over, it became blurry. These are the number five oh fours in our district. And basically that end column, you can see that's 2015 in the red and 2025 in the blue. And you can see that it's doubled in those ten years, the number of five oh four plans. When we look at the qualitative data for our students with disabilities, we can grab this off of Aspen.
Next slide, please.
Oops. Thank you. We can say that for the number of students with this particular disability, some of our students have more than one disability. This captured just the one, what we used to call the primary disability. But here are the numbers. When you see less than ten, I did not put the numbers there because they may be identifiable to some students. And then the next slide shows you the staffing ratios, number of teachers, paraprofessionals. Quite high for the district. Nurses, guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, school psychologists, BCBAs. This is not including any contracted staff that we've needed to fill some gaps. Behavior technicians, speech and language pathologists and occupational therapists and special education administrative assistants. You notice that speech and language pathologists, we have quite a few, and we also contract out. One of the things that I did find, and actually the report for special education also found the same thing, is that we have an awful lot of students with speech and language services. And the national average of students with disability with speech and language services on their IEP hovers around nineteen or twenty. And it's anywhere from fifty-five to eighty percent in Hingham. So that's another area that I've got to dig down into. So what have I been doing for ninety days? These is a list of all the things that we have accomplished for the ninety days. And again, I'm not going to read through them. But we've done a lot of work. There's still a lot more work to do. We are going to keep up with these. We've done some major things. We transitioned to a new legal counsel. We are looking at a professional development book study for responsive IEP and five oh four meetings, team meetings. And we've already read the first chapter. And we're going to be discussing with some prompts. Our first session is going to be Wednesday. So I can share that information with you as well as we go along. We have renewed our partnerships with Landmark and we have a new partnership with New England Center for Children, which is that gold standard for students with autism. And we also are engaging in a stu- study pilot program for language-based learning with Left Side Strong. And so those are all the things that I've done so far. So phase two, the next ninety days and beyond, a deeper dive into the data. And I've mentioned that as we go along, trying to find some causational, trying to do some root cause analysis. But this can't be done in isolation. It needs to be done in collaboration and partnerships at the school level. So I'll be reaching out to our school principals and our team chairs to do that work with me. And then again, I'd like to thank my superintendent, my assistant superintendent, Naisha, and everybody that's helped me. And Caitlin prettied up this presentation and I said I would give her credit. So I'm, I want to, I want to be honest here. So you have any questions, clarifications or suggestions?
Thank you very much for that presentation. Really appreciate it. I will open this up to the full school committee first for questions or comments. So let them go first.
Welcome and very appreciative of this deep dive into data. I think it's been, you know, really interesting and really useful. It sort of echoes some of the discussions we've had in the subcommittee. And you've seen some of the, with, with data, some of the, a lot of the same observations that parents have anecdotally been talking about. So it's really satisfying to see that and really, I'm not going to bury you with micro questions about all this stuff. But I look forward to talking more about, you know, the next phase and all of that, but really, thank you.
I would echo that a little bit and say that I really appreciate it. I mean, I think I understand it, right? You're new to the role, so you can be very transparent and explain all the things. But I mean, I think that is hugely helpful to sort of level set where we are, to understand how many students we're talking about, what the professional development needs are, what the family needs are. So I think this was really, really great, transparent presentation. So thank you.
Thank you.
Matt?
Thank you. I'm curious how you looked at the input of the previous assessment and kind of initial strategic plan that was for special education. How, do you have a point of view at this point of like, how much of that stays in terms of overlap with your initial assessment and how much you, you know,
Sure.
You know, I'd reprioritize, which makes sense.
That study was done, I believe, two years ago or a little over two years ago. And so my, I would use current data and current research. I take into consideration what it is, but I try not to let it bias my thoughts. And so I kind of like the idea of going in blind, grabbing all the data, coming up with my thoughts. And then when we craft that strategic action plan, that would be something for open discussion with, with my superintendent, assistant superintendent on how, how to meld those two. But also to align it to, you know, the, the overall strategic plan, you know, for the district, which that's kind of where I would like to be. So I appreciate the report. It's informational, but I also have two, almost going to be three years of data. That's more current right now.
That makes sense. I, I guess my thought is while that is a couple of years old, a lot of the themes identified there were consistent with themes that have been around for a long time and, and what you've identified here in a lot of ways. So I don't think it, it will drastically change, I guess, in terms of priority, prioritization.
I think, looking at my priority, what I found the most, the most, the thing that bothered me the most is that such a fine, wonderful school district and there just wasn't a lot of trust in special education. And that really was bothersome to me. And so for me, that kind of became the priority. You know, how can I, how can I rebuild that? And my CPAC offices are just fantastic and they understand where we need to go. And again, I, I don't shy away from it. And we're doing things to try to rebuild that trust and the relationship so that people have confidence. We certainly have confidence in the general education part of Hingham and the wonderful opportunities that kids have and, and parents and families are, are really happy with that. I want, I want to see the same thing for us, for our families with students with disabilities. That's my vision.
Million percent agree that that is the single biggest issue.
One, one concern that I, I had and other parents, the notification of when students are accepted into extended school year. Happened late this year. Students missed weeks that they could have planned around. Given, given, we all want to stop summer slide and we all want to improve those thirty percent numbers. I just wanted to make you aware of that late notification. It har- I think it harmed more than a few students.
I, I, I can't explain why.
I know it wasn't you either.
I know. But, but, so we've put structures in place already. I've given everybody a form and it's called ESY data collection form. The best data collection that you can get for regression and recoupment. It's not just about regression. It's about how quickly or how slowly students recoup that lost learning over the summer. So we have our June benchmarks already done. It's already done. And we have our September benchmarks. That snapshot of time is the most valuable piece that I have for data, okay, to determine how much a child has regressed, whether that be a general education student or a special education student. And so I've given our teachers and our staff a form that they have to complete. And they're okay with that, to be able to bring that to the child's current IEP meeting. We, we are not going to wait until the spring to determine on the data that we have right now in our hands. As students' IEP meetings are rolling around, we're going to use that. And if a student, this is how I've always done it. If a student's meeting isn't until, like, I start the process in December, by March, I know my list. And if a student haven't had their meeting in March, I assume that if they have ESY on their IEP, that they're going to be going to ESY that year until I'm told differently.
So when should parents expect notifications?
I would expect that I would be looking for verification from our families. I'm going to say no later than April because I've got a lot of hiring to do. And it's always like the Wild West when you hire for ESY. You have to grab all the people quickly and everybody to, to secure, you know, the staffing that you need. So parents should know immediately if their, if their child's IEP meeting is in November or December or January, February, that's part of that process. But any student whose IEP meeting is like in May or June or whatever, we're pushing that forward as far as what the ESY goes. We, we need the, the real numbers. And I did hear that that was a big, huge problem. And not only from my families, but I also heard it from my executive assistant because she kind of is largely in charge of coordinating all that and transportation as well and organizing all of that. That won't happen this year.
And since extended school year is half days, could there be any coordination between the recreation department and the, the rec camps or whatever camps for parents? I mean, you have a disabled kid or disabled kids and it's just a half day. And if you're working, just something, other things of.
So there's a, and again.
Because they're all town-run. The town of Hingham could probably work together between the departments.
They could. Transportation to ESY is, is something that we provide because we have it at one site this year. It's going to be at one site and it's going to be at Foster. So rather than take the child home, if we can transport to, and again, it'd be up to Katie to guide this for us. We can transport to a recreation and we have a handoff, a known handoff. I'm not just going to drop children off anywhere. I have to know whose hand is taking that child's hand at that site. Those are things that are very important. And then what happens if that person isn't there, who's the backup person? It really has to be vetted out because student safety is, is paramount. But I mean, that's something that, that we could look into.
Thank you.
Carrie, did you have a question?
Yep. So thank you for this. I really appreciate the data. And I just wanted to call out your vision. You talked about helping students reach their fullest potential and I just really appreciate that. That's beyond free and appropriate public education.
It is.
So I really did appreciate that and the deep dive into the data too. It's really helpful. I guess the one comment I had is on the student growth. You talked about, and there has been some improvement over time. But shouldn't the goal there be to have students with disabilities kind of outpace their typical peers when it comes to the rate of growth?
Yes. Research, research will tell you that it's very, it's much more difficult for students that are proficient to grow and move than it is for students with disabilities. We should be able to grow at a much faster rate. But again, our data buckets aren't showing some of that.
Right.
It's, it's so, I'm not trying to point fingers to general education. So is it, our kids are really growing and general education students aren't growing as much as they should? Because, or shouldn't we be exceeding the growth of the general education students? Again, I think it's, we have to look at standards-based IEPs, grade level modified, standards-based IEPs. We need to look at rigor. And there's, I mean, when I was teaching, I tried not to have my students break their pencils in math, but we have to have productive struggle. We have to get students to that point where they're not frustrated, but they're expanding and they're learning. And sometimes that's a little bit uncomfortable, uncomfortable for adults. And it's uncomfortable for students with disabilities, but we have to have that balance. We have to make sure that our kids have that rigorous instruction, not overwhelming, and it's accessible. And that is an art.
Yep. Thank you. I completely agree. And I, I just wonder if maybe the fact that when they get to grade ten, they're, they're so, a much smaller number that are meeting and exceeding, I'm wondering if it's because the growth isn't as much as it should be over the earlier years.
I'll be finding that out.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'll leave it to my question. Any more questions?
Nope.
You said that your phase two, which is the next ninety days and beyond, a deeper dive into data, any sneak peek into what that data may be or what your type of data are going to be looking at?
So this is where we go to the root cause analysis. And I have to look at, and I'm already working with our department heads, K to twelve. I've already met with the math and I've already met with ELA and I'll be meeting with the science as well. And I need to know that if our children are being pulled into a substantially separate setting for their learning, what is the curriculum that's being taught there? We can do walkthroughs. Are they using the same curriculum that's modified? What do the accommodations look like for our students with disabilities? Are we utilizing all of the available accommodations that we had? Last week, when I met with our math director and we were talking about the use of calculator. And I said, you know, that cognitive load for students to try to, you know, remember, you know, multiplication and the inverse operation of division, why are we wasting our brain power on that? And then we can't access the higher level learning in math. Use a calculator. Don't give it a sheet where people have to do this. Use a calculator. We all use a calculator in life. It's allowed. And for some students, that allows them to move on, okay, to the higher level thinking and mathematics. And so he agreed a hundred percent. So that's one area that we're going to look at, is are we actually giving the accommodations that we should for our students' learning so that they can access higher level learning?
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there anyone in the community or on Zoom that have any questions? Diane? Diane Denaply, do you have a question?
Yes. Hi Diane Denaply, sixteen Gardner Street. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Pennerisi. This was really informative, a lot of information I've been wondering about for some time. And I just want to thank you. I mean, I, I've. I mean, I, I was on one of those early listening calls and have worked with you on some issues already regarding my son who's in high school. And I have seen a change in what has been possible in Hingham. And I'm not just saying, you know, I like you, you're a wonderful lady, but I've seen things actually happen. So I appreciate that. I have some hope, which, you know, is sometimes challenging when you have a child or children with disabilities after years, you can, it can be difficult to have a positive relationship. So I, I thank you for dealing with the trust factor. I think that's going to have to be continuously worked on at all levels. At Gen Ed and sports and whatever we're doing, the minute that child gets on the bus or van and the minute they get off, it has to be a place where they're respected and that everyone they work with understands that disabilities can look very, very different based on the child. They could be a mentally genius or a child who's struggling just to get on that van. And that is a Hingham student and they need to be heard and respected. So thank you for addressing that and I look forward to your next 90 days. I, I think the high school graduation requirements and hearing more about our relationship with Bridgewater and other kind of post-grad opportunities would be really, really appreciated. Thank you. And thank you Superintendent Roberts for your help as well.
Thank you, Diane. T asks if you could identify your name and address, please. Will you unmute you?
Yeah, super sorry about that. Tina Sherwood, 16 Drudge Drive. I need to change that. I apologize. Thank you so much. This was a really, really well-done presentation. Happy to have you and appreciate your, appreciate your work on this. I have a question and it may, it may be for the superintendent as well. And that's just that the E L A, the math and the science achievement information, is that from M C A S? That's M C A S scores, right?
Yes.
So, sorry. So with the change that was voted last year where those are no longer requirements, I'm wondering if you have any concerns about collecting this kind of great data going forward?
Yes, we do. In that statewide, the state has reported that the current year's 2025 M C A S for grade 10, there was a significant and dramatic statewide decline because the students were aware that M C A S didn't count. The state was able to track things such as the number of minutes that students attended to a test or an individual essay, and it declined dramatically. So I, I do worry a bit about the M C A S grade 10 score in particular being somewhat compromised as a metric to demonstrate improvement over time. The K eight scores did not seem to be impacted to the same degree. But our grade 10 students across the state did appear to be impacted by the news that M C A S no longer counts. That said, we do have other data that we're using, particularly for K six. We have really robust internal M T S S data that we will be taking a deep dive into. But across the state, there is concern about that grade 10 M C A S to be used as a metric because of the recent decline. So stay tuned for that presentation. So if you'll join us later in October, our E L A, math and science, and actually social studies is new to the M C A S party this year as well. They'll be presenting the 2025 data, which overall K eight looks terrific. We did see some, some of the similar trends for grade 10, however, that have been mentioned statewide in terms of student compliance, if you will, with, with the M C A S. So thanks for that question, Tina.
Thank you so much. That's, that's very interesting stuff and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tina. I don't see any other questions from anyone else online. And there are no other questions for anyone here. So we will. So we will move on to our next, so thank you, Christine Pennerisi. Thank you for your presentation. We will move on to our next item, which is 7.2, which is to receive a presentation from the Plymouth River School Improvement Plan. We have Principal Regula Moss to come to the podium to give his presentation.
So good evening, everyone. So this is our mid-year between our school improvement plan from 2024 to 2026. So if we want to go next slide. So we just here's, you know, the Hingham Public Schools' mission statement and the core values for Hingham Public Schools. I won't read them as we all know those values and our mission statement. So our goals were for academics was to enhance educational opportunities by optimizing teaching and learning. And we'll talk more about that when I get into it, but that was the main, that was the goal. Social emotional was to enhance multi-tiered systems of support and to effectively address our social emotional needs by collaborating with the Social, Emotional and Behavior Academy. And lastly, connections was the last goal is to build and grow a healthy and equitable, inclusive community that strengthens a strong school culture to allow for social, emotional, physical and academic wellness for all students and staff and anyone with a connection to the Plymouth River community. So we didn't just look at students or staff. We looked at the whole broad picture of anyone who steps foot onto Plymouth River property. How do we make connections with them? This is just a quick sort of look at for the, our strategic plan that it originally fell under. So when it ended in 2025, goal one fell under spoke two. Goal two fell under spoke three. And then goal three fell under spokes one and two. And those were the strategic objectives that it fell through. And so we sort of did a crosswalk for our new strategic plan, just to make sure that our school improvement plan still was meeting what the, what our goals are for the focus. So if we go to the next slide. So for goal one, still stays with innovative and responsive teaching and learning with the strategic objective of asserting student success through aligned, high-quality pre-K curriculum. Next slide. For goal two, it still fell under healthy, equitable and inclusive communities, exploring S E L, refining districts' approach to technology and cultivating equitable and inclusive environments. And then the next slide was still again, goals spokes one and three. So culture of collaboration and community partnerships. And you can go to the next slide as well. So that was goal one. And then goal three, healthy and equitable and inclusive communities. So we wanted to make sure that our school improvement plan going forward for the, the other half of this year still met the strategic plan that we, our new plan that we put forward. And we were able to see that there was still, they still met. The crosswalk met and so we could move forward from that. So for goal one, there's a lot there. So, so, you know, we continue to look at U D L. We had partnerships with Lori Casna, who would come in and meet with me regularly. She would meet with the staff at team band levels and sort of meet, sort of seeing, let's bring a lesson. How can we look at this lesson? How can we change it? What can we do to make things better? We would do walkthroughs throughout the classroom. We would leave notes for teachers on like, thank you for breaking down this barrier here for the student to be able to learn. And really diving into the guidelines to say, like, where, where are we meeting these guidelines and where are we falling short on the guidelines? And this was the end of our three-year period with the, with the U D L Academy. So it was nice to see that, that we had a lot of people, you know, sort of jumping on the bandwagon. The first year you had sort of the people who just really wanted to. The second year, you got a couple more who saw what was happening because we had people presenting at faculty meetings and stuff like that. And then having Lori come in and walk through and then meet with them and see that like, what they need to do to just tweak here and tweak there wasn't asking them to do something different that they already do. They're actually already doing it. It's just a tweak. So that, that helped to get most on the bandwagon. Still, not everyone is there. But again, this is something where you, you have to have the buy-in in order to make it happen. But we keep working through having those conversations on how we can break down barriers to make sure that all children can, can learn and thinking about those barriers ahead of time, not in the moment. Again, we refine the master's schedule to implement a more cohesive schedule and maximize time on learning. So the new schedule was able to allow us, what we were able to do is for each grade level band, we don't just have one special educator tied to that grade level band. We actually have one, we have two tied to each band. And so they share, like, this year I have someone sharing first and third and another sharing second and fourth. It allows them to do two things. One, it allows them, the special educators to have like a companion and a chair to sort of talk with each other through some high-profile cases or some low-profile cases, talk about, when we did testing, like, what does that testing look like? How, like, I'm looking at it this way. Are you seeing something different? Should I offer another test? And the other thing it did was it allowed for services to be delivered where it's felt like the schedule was sort of like pinpointed, where you had to do it here, had to do it here. But sharing special educators throughout that schedule allowed the flexibility to give more time to the students where they needed it. And that's what, what we're here for, right? Is to make sure that students are learning. Another thing that we were able to do through this and using the M T S S process is in first grade, we use, we were able to use all six specialists to push in to, we do, we call it walk to read in first grade, where each grade level really has six adults. I'm sorry. Each grade, each classroom has three adults in each one, plus we have our literacy specialists and our two interventionists. So we really had all hands on deck for first grade to make sure that our students were really beginning to learn to read, to make sure that they then were successful going, moving forward. So we did learn that second grade needed a little bit more help. So we also were able to use the specialists there. We used three specialists in grade two to make smaller groups in order to give better instruction for the M T S S model. Next slide, please. So holding our data meetings, you know, this is always a work in progress. We're always holding our data meetings. So there's a link that I, that you'll have in your folder that just sort of says, shows how we keep track of the students and where they are going from maybe in the classroom. And then they're moving into working with an interventionist. They may go eight weeks with working with that interventionist. And then they come out and they go back into the classroom because they've met that benchmark that they need to make during that time period. But it's always a fluid sort of, sort of place there. We actually were also able to, we did use a, we used our computer science specialist who did a book study with our fourth grade. That was a project-based self-reflection where she ran some of it, but some of the times that the kids were in their own group, being watched by an adult, but reading the book, A Rover Story. And then she was using real-life stuff about what the Rover story was about to integrate it into what, what was the real, so, what was the real issue with the Rover story? And it was really a, you had like a Rover who went up to Mars and then it was sort of lonely and it stopped doing what it needed to do. So they had to send another one up there to sort of have it be friends. And between those two friends, they were able to then figure out how to make things work, but then they wrote it into a story. And so it was able to see real life. She was able to bring real life in with the book and have that correlation between the two, which was able to enhance some of our readers who were, you know, further ahead and they needed to have some enrichment other than having. So we really looked at how can we also enrich students, not just looking at the, at the bottom students and not just looking at the middle, but also how can we reach our high-end The creating time for coaching for math and reading, that's been a slow roll. For some reason, coaching is, it almost feels like it's a dirty word to teachers right now. But we did have one teacher who said, I'd like to work with the literacy specialist. Another one who said, hey, I'm struggling a little bit with math. And they worked with the math specialist. From that happening, we had someone else sign on this year that wants to be coached by the literacy specialist and then the math is working with the pilot program. So we, there's some coaching going on there with two grade levels. And they're seeing that the coaching is beneficial and they're seeing that when they meet with the coach and these things are happening and little tweaks here and little tweaks there, the improvement in their instruction to the students is getting better. And they're seeing, they saw results from having that coaching. So we're also trying to get teachers to realize that being coached doesn't mean that you're a bad teacher. Being coached doesn't mean that you're doing something wrong. Being coached just means that we see a lot more potential in you and we're just helping you ignite that a little bit more. Next slide, please. So goal number two was our social emotional. So we got to go be part of the Social, Emotional and Behavior Academy. The academy is slimmed down a lot this year. So what they gave us last year for a lot of work, we don't have as much time that we're going to see them, but we still do have a companionship with Tori Todd, who's been working with us, who will still, who I will continue to still meet with. But we were approved in the academy and then, you know, we went up to Waltham for four days. And out of those four days was, two of them were really just talking about what are the big scope and sequence of how you want to look at social emotional learning? And the other two was what was our subject area that we were focused on? So we had chosen P B I S. So we really worked with people who were skilled in P B I S to rebuild, to rebuild our matrices that we had from pre-COVID to post-COVID. And how did those change and what areas did we really need to look at?
For the non-educators, can you identify the P B I S?
Yep, P B I S, Positive Behavior Intervention Strategies. So it's really focusing on the positive and not on the negative. So, you know, an example would just be like if you're in the classroom and we're looking at the matrices for P B I S in the classroom, a positive behavior example would be like, instead of saying like Johnny, stop, stop rolling around on the rug. It would be like, oh, I see that Sarah's sitting on the rug and she's ready to learn. Right? So you're, you're not looking at the negative, you're focusing on the positive. They had us do a self-assessment form, sort of see where we're at. We're sort of middle in the road of where we needed to be at. So now we're looking at that self-assessment form and saying, like, where do we need to go next with our team? And then they also had us complete strengths and needs assessment and working with the S E B team are our next step. So these are the things that, for the strengths and the self-assessment, it's working with Tori to sort of say, where do we go next to make sure that we're, we're moving forward in, in the right way? We also looked at the toolbox curriculum and looking at how can we deliver any tweaks to this program or other, as part of the wellness committee that I had joined last year, like are there other options that we have to look at? Because by the time that you get to fourth and fifth grade, what we have learned is that like when you sit at a kid, use your breathing tool, they're like, yeah, I got it, my breathing tool. And so for some kids, that's, that the toolbox just, we need, we need a little bit more for them. And so we're looking at how can we, how can we take either what we know from other, other places or other things that the middle school is using that we could use at the elementary level to sort of make those connections? And I think it would be helpful to make those connections, especially for our fifth graders to start hearing some of that language from the middle school. When they get to sixth grade, that language isn't new language for them. So how do we integrate those two? And that's something that, you know, I haven't approached Derek yet, but it's something that I need to approach Derek and say, how can, what are you using? And how can we sort of start moving that forward from fifth grade to go from toolbox language to whatever they're using at the middle school? Again, as I said, we chose our priority area, which was P B I S. So we're working with Tori Todd and Christine Downs. Christine Downs is a guru in Positive Behavior Intervention Strategies and Tori is, is really good as, as well. So I've met with them over Zoom periodically. And then we created a new rubric. And that new rubric was created with all of faculty. So we used our time that we had P D with our paraprofessionals to say, what does this look like in the classroom? But our paras are out on the playground. So let's, I want you to focus on the playground piece. I want you to focus on the cafeteria because you're in the kids with the cafeteria. So how do you want that to look for kids in the cafeteria? And the way that our matrices is set up is it's polite, responsible and safe. So what does it mean to be polite in each area? What's it mean to be responsible in each area? And what areas are, how do you act safe in each area? And then again, we had more trainings that we attended. So those were the four, October 24th, that we went up to Waltham as a group. There's a group of 10 or 11 of us that were able to go up. And then eight 90-minute virtual sessions, meeting with them. And then the last one is part of the, part of the S E B Academy is our specialist came to me, if you remember when I presented this plan first, and they wanted to do the book, My Shadow is Purple. And My Shadow is Purple is really a book about everyone understanding that they're all unique, they're all who they are, and to accept who they are and everyone accepts everyone who are they, who they are and, and how they want to be. Some people like sports, some people like dance, some people like music, some people like whatever they like, and you need to accept that. So this year, we've got a new book that we're going to be doing that's called Be a Tree. And so Be a Tree is a story about you individually, each one of you is a tree. You're rooted, you're grounded in, in a certain spot, in a certain area. But each one of those trees helps and feeds off each other to protect the people under it. So under the canopy to protect that. Their root systems are all around the, on the ground, that they're all interconnected between there. And the best way to describe the book is I'm going to read a piece from the author's statement that our specialist, you know, chose this book for, for a specific reason. He said, "I learned that trees in a forest help protect and care for each other like family members. Trees with extra sugar share their, share with their neighbors and coordinate their photosynthesis rates so that they can all flourish. This was an even story of how neighboring trees kept a tree stump alive for hundreds of years by sharing sugar. Trees communicate news, information about insects, droughts and other dangers through their intersecting roots with the help of special fungi networks and affectionately called the wood wide web. Roots and fungi are partners in forest ecosystems in exchanging vital nutrients and learning from their joined neural-like pathways. Immigrant trees, those transported, those transplanted and disconnected from their own natural habitat networks are therefore more vulnerable to damage from insects, droughts and other threats. Together, trees help sustain microclimates and ecosystems. They give creatures homes and food. There is nothing better than a shady tree on a hot day. and food. There is nothing better than a shady tree on a hot day. We marvel at their beauty, their ancient elegance. We must do our, our best to protect them, and we can also learn so much as a society from their societal system. If we behave like trees in the forest by protecting each other and sharing resources of all kinds, the world would much, would be a much better place." So that was really a great way to go from, here's who we are as individuals. We can still be an individual, but we all thrive and feed off of each other. So how can we do that in a, in a meaningful way? So they are working on lesson plans for that to deliver as part of their goal. And so again, this is One School, One Book, is Be a Tree. The overarching goal is a program invite every student and staff member to read the same book. Next slide. Building on last year's focus of community and individual by considering community, how as we have a school, how are we all connected, and the beautiful imagery through the books will help students also see visually, as well as the auditory part. And for each specialist team, they'll create lesson plans, the importance of community, sharing resilience, SEL topics, science and literacy standards, and just as an example, nope, go back one, nope, too far. There you go, right there. So they really didn't just say like, let me do something SEL, they also looked at the standards and they said, I can do something with social emotional behavior. I can do something with this book, and how does it tie to the English Language Arts and Literacy? How does it tie to life science? How does it tie to art? How does it tie to social justice standards? How does it tie to social awareness, relationship? So they really thought outside the box and not just, I'm going to present something on SEL for every student. They're like, they really thought about how can I hit multiple different layers of learning, and also help the teachers with something with life science, something with arts and literacy. The art teacher can help out. So really combining everyone, it's a full school focus on this one book to help students realize their full potential. The last one was making connections. So conducted, we conducted an anonymous survey to the staff. The survey was given. We did go over the results with school council and faculty council in our school. I mean, the, unfortunately, we didn't get the results that we sort of wanted. The results were inconclusive to really help us move forward. But we are thinking of other ways that we can sort of get the information that we need to sort of understand what is needed to help everyone feel better at school. So we are working on right now, as a group, what sort of questions we want to ask students. This is the next phase of the questions. We questioned the staff, but now we want to look at the students and sort of say, where are you? How do you feel at school? What, what are the things that are going well for you? What are the things that you feel like aren't going well for you? How can we help you? But we really want to tailor those, those questions to each grade level to make sure that, you know, I'm not asking a fifth grader the same, I want to ask the fifth grader the same thing as a first grader, but they're going to understand it in a different way. So we really got to tweak out those questions and think about how we're going to ask them. And the other thing that we were, we're focusing on is seeing where our discipline referrals were coming from, and then how do we use our matrices for Positive Behavior Intervention supports, along with where kids are coming from. So they're, on, on that link sort of says, like, it came from, we're less worried about the classroom it came from, but did it come from on the bus? Did it come from the playground? Did it come from the cafeteria? Did it come from the classroom? So we can really start focusing in, and do we start seeing that same kid's name over and over again, and how do we help that student be better? So monitoring this has also seen that as we begin to implement PBIS, the referral log is getting smaller and smaller to the classroom, which is a, a nice data point to see. So we also got from Heather Cashman, we were evaluating, how much is our website being used? How much traffic is PRS's website getting as opposed to the smore? And using that information, we found that most parents are, if they're going to the website, they're checking lunch, or they're checking for the smore because they couldn't find the email that had the smore in it. So really, it's a, they weren't getting much more than lunch and smore. That's where, where things were going for the website. Another piece, it's still a work in progress, is in the smore, we, I was asking, you know, one question, like, how was the beginning of, of school? Just a question, and if, please give me constructive feedback on how it was going. I was getting very little responses back, even with a one question. So, you know, I'm rethinking that, do I not send it out in the smore, and do I send it out separately as just a one-question little survey question to parents to sort of get more involvement in that, to make sure that, you know, parent satisfaction is, for PRS, is, we're getting that feedback from them as well. And then the last piece that we have to work on is, you know, as we follow polite, responsible, and safe in the matrices, we're looking at awards to be made for polite, responsible, and safe, and we're sort of thinking about how do we want to give those awards out? And is it by the grade level? So there's one kid who gets a polite in grade one, one who gets responsible, and one gets a safe, or is it by classroom? Like, we want it to not be, every kid gets a trophy. We want it to be seen as it's something that you really want to earn and deserve, and not just everyone will, everyone will have gotten one by the end of the year. That's not the, the route that we're sort of going for that. So we're sort of looking on how they want to be handed out, and how to recognize students. We'll recognize them at all school meeting, but which way to go about it? And then, does anyone have any questions for me?
Thank you very much. Anyone in the committee have any questions?
More of a comment. I just want to say thank you for all of that, and that, after being on your school council with you for two years and now having switched schools, it's kind of nice to see the update and see how much progress you've made from last spring when we last spoke. But also, I love the one book, one school idea. I love that you're bringing in all the different disciplines to work together and really have it, not just everyone in the school reading it, but all the different curriculums relating to it. And I think it's a nice transition up to the middle school where they do the, the all-school read.
Yep.
So that kids kind of get used to that idea. So thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question. Just on the, the survey that you took of the staff, were the results inconclusive because just not enough participation, or just was it sort of answers were all over the map, so you couldn't kind of?
Not, not data.
Not, I would go not enough data in order to what I was looking for.
Okay. We were, Greg was, we had, after my first school council meeting, so Greg and I were discussing it beforehand. So this is my second time with this presentation, and I'm learning so much more each and every time.
Yeah.
It's, it's really great. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
It kind of makes me want to go back and start elementary school.
Come on down!
It seems like you've created a really great environment there. I love the, the sort of the carefulness and the specificity you're implementing PBIS, because so I think it often just gets a bad rap that like, you know, kids just don't get punished, we can't punish kids anymore. And it's not that.
Right.
It's really about, you know, expecting the best from kids, and which is specific to a situation and expectations and, I don't know, it's, I appreciate the care and specificity that you're implementing that, so.
Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Greg. We appreciate it. And I particularly loved this year's book selection.
Well, I have, well, I knew you would, but I also, Mary Eastwood, the last time we were both here, showed me up and gave you all ducks, that you're all getting a copy of each book to take home.
Well, there goes my Christmas gift idea for the. I was going to give it to all of you folks.
I do love this one. Thank you.
You had me at fun, fungi.
So unexpected and so, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
We will let you sit down while we do our, this is our mic, we let you sit down while we do our approval of the, of the plan.
Oh, yes.
So you don't have to stand up while we do it.
Continue to stand up there. If we don't have any, any more questions or comments, I will take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve and accept the Plymouth River School Improvement Plan for the years 2024 through 2026.
I will suck it. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
You too. Okay. Next up, we have 7.3, which is to discuss the appointment of three members to the 2025 Hingham School Building Committee and Act Appropriate. And just so for people listening, this is a new committee that was appointed at town meeting this year. It's kind of a carryover from the 2017 School Building Committee that had worked on the Buster building and the PRS windows. This is going to be a seven-member committee. The school committee has the authority to appoint three people. The moderator has appointed two, and the select board has appointed two people already. So these are the final three. And, do you, Ayesha or Matt, I don't know which one he wants to go through this. We did this through the, the sub, the finance subcommittee. So if you both want to fight over it, who wants to go over it?
Can you just grab a mic?
No, sorry, had to do it. You want that to just?
Am I just reading this?
Thank you. Thank you. So we want to say thank you to the, the, the community, because we got so many different applications and people who were interested in volunteering. At first, we thought we would have to like bend people's wrists to try to get people to sign up, but we got a huge number of people actually signing up. As you know, as, as Jen just mentioned, into the, both the select board and the moderators have, moderators have already selected their individual persons. And we went through and actually reviewed in terms of the, the experience and or background for a lot of the persons who we had, who had volunteered and provided information. And the three people that we selected are Brian Malkin, Shane Nolan, and Angela Thadinja. And all of them had lots of experience, and they hadn't had, they actually new people in, in terms of, they haven't volun, they hadn't, they are not, they are not on any current committees. So hopefully that wouldn't mean that they would...
Not to our knowledge, at least. I said not to our knowledge, at least. They're, they're new people.
Exactly. In terms of that, they're fairly new people in terms of what, because the application also includes what are you, what have you volunteered for in the past, or what are you currently volunteering for? And they didn't seem to have any other areas where they were currently engaged. So we hope that that will work to our advantage as well. In terms of the next step, we hope to have a session where we can bring all the appointees together, get to know them a little bit better, find out where their strengths are, and find out a little bit more about those appointees, so we can bring back further information to the committee about appointing a chair and a vice chair for that committee. That will be the next step in terms of the process of things. Okay?
So tonight, I think we're just, we're asking the full committee to accept three people that we, that the subcommittee chose. Correct?
Did you interview these people?
We did not.
Do you know if the select board and moderator interviewed their?
No, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what their process was, to be honest.
Yeah, I, I, the select board did not. I don't, I don't know about the moderator.
Moderator did, yeah, okay. I guess it, it would be helpful a little bit to know who the other appointees are, just to look at the, and what their qualifications are. I just feel like we're making this decision in a, in a vacuum a little bit.
So in, in terms of, I guess in terms of the way we laid it out, we laid it out in terms of the committee making that decision. So are you thinking about overturning the committee's decision in terms of that? I'm not sure exactly what, what that, what, what are you looking for, sorry?
She wants to understand, who are the other people that are, have been chosen? Like, if all four of them were electrical engineer, project managers, and chemical engineers, then Carrie might say, well, do we have, I don't know, what, a lawyer? For example.
Yeah.
And at the time when we met, we weren't sure yet, actually, who else was, I am actually not sure who has been selected.
So we, I, we do know now.
We do know now. They just appointed two on, on Tuesday night.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I can, I can give you that information as well?
We just don't want to put the names up on.
So I stopped sharing for a bit, so it's just on, oh, it's on my computer.
Thank you.
Okay. In terms of the current committee, we know that, that the first three here are the, those persons selected by the school committee. In terms of the select board, they selected Thomas Donnelly and James Cahill. In terms of the moderator, they selected Thomas Feck and Charles Hayes. And like most of the other committees, Catherine Roberts will also be there. Mad me out of myself.
Yeah. Well, that looks like a lot of very qualified people, so I'm happy that they step forward.
Is that what you were asking? Sorry, Katie?
That's what I was asking, yes.
Carrie?
Yep.
Okay, sorry, if I didn't understand. Okay. All right.
Any more questions?
Thank you very much to everyone who's stepping up.
It was exciting to see people applaud. And thank you to everyone who was publicizing it. Thank you to Heather and Katie and Ayesha for getting the word out.
Someone said that Hingham runs on volunteers. I came up with that phrase.
All right.
Want a motion?
You want a motion? All right. I will make a motion to appoint Brian Mulcaren, Shane Nolan, and Angela Thadinja to the 2025 Hingham School Build De, Building Committee.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. And we will send an email to these three inviting them to the.
Facility tour.
Facility tour on the 18th.
Yep.
Got that date right. Excellent.
They will know.
They will know.
In the minutes.
Unless they're watching right now. Okay. All right. Next up, we have 7.5, which is, 7.4 is to discuss salary negotiations, subcommittee assignments, and act as appropriate. So in your packet, I just updated the sheet that had all of our subcommittees on. I did not, I hope it's in there.
It's like the very first, or the top left on that.
It's on the top. So I just, I just put in, I added to the document that we previously had for our subcommittee and school liaisons. But we're only discussing salary negotiations because that's all I have on the agenda. And yes, it's bothering me that there's three extra lines in there, and I can't get the formatting to change, but we're going to have to accept it and move on.
I'm not sure I feel ready to vote on this with the three extra lines.
Really throwing me off. Spent a lot of time trying to get rid of them. So we, this is how we broke it up. If anyone has any questions or comments? Is it because of the three lines? I just want to make sure that spacing wasn't putting me on the wrong. There, just one thing I did, the first one for the Unit E, one recommendation I have is to, we can either do, because we already have certain dates set for that, those meetings, we can either make that effective, make this effective number first, because I know some people can or cannot attend meetings, or we can do, continue with me appointing the, if someone can't make it. Because we can, that, that would still be.
I know, I can't remember what, did the ground rules say?
So a quorum now is one person. Right? So.
But I.
Yeah, as long as one of us are there.
I feel like. I feel like we are, I feel like that's, like we agreed, when we signed the ground rules, we agreed that there, that the subcommittee was three people, so it kind of feels like we made that.
Except, except that the union didn't, they wouldn't specify their bargaining team, so.
Right. No, no, I know. I mean, I'm thinking we didn't have to specify the people attending, but if they thought, there would always be at least two people there.
Yeah. I mean, we can, that, that's the simplest thing.
I think, oh, I just because, because you and I are going to stay on it, and then John comes off, but I can't make that October 21st, and there was another one.
Right.
So, I know.
So just appoint someone.
Yeah.
So I could just make.
Yeah.
Point for any.
John to come on October 21st. And whatever other day.
Just continue that process if we need, if everyone's okay with that.
Yep. That's good.
Okay. Do we need to accept this or update this?
Yeah, we typically vote yes, right? We have to vote on it.
Yeah.
All right, you want a motion?
I'll take a motion.
So I will make a motion. So I will make a motion to update the salary negotiations subcommittee to have Carrie Neam and Michelle Eyre continue on Unit E. Michelle Eyre and Jen Benham go with Unit C, and then Carrie and.
Ally, welcome.
To do the salary negotiations for School, Bus, and Van Directors Association.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
May you post? All right. Now we will move on to 7.5, which is to receive an update on the end of the year FY '25 budget summary. Ayesha?
And I think in terms of, like just looking at the past iterations of this, as we tried to close off the year last year, we have had several versions of this document, and we've kind of had many meetings with it. This is just a final in terms of that and to get your vote on it, and if you have any follow-up questions on it as well.
We looked at this in the subcommittee, correct?
We did, yep. And, yeah, managed very well.
Thank you.
For anyone who's listening, Ayesha, you want to scroll to that number on the bottom, which is a zero, zero, zero balance.
All right, so there is no, nothing?
Nothing, nothing was turned back. Thank you.
Thank you. That is some good budgeting.
Yes. Does anyone have any other questions?
I'd say give that woman a raise, but we can't afford one anymore.
She wins running the Zoom. All right, if we don't have any other questions, I will take a motion.
I will make a motion to accept the end-of-year fiscal year '25 budget summary, which shows a zero available balance.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
May you post? All right. Thank you very much, Ayesha.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have.
We have no grants or.
No grant, no grants, no surplus. Subcommittee and project boards. I feel like we just did this last week. Anyone have any updates from last week?
Just continually, especially looking at Dr. Panarisi's presentation, where to say, do another plug for the educational programming subcommittee next Wednesday on the 15th at 4:30. We're going to continue that discussion and look at, do a little bit of a dive into the beginning of the year data, including the MCAS data from last spring and all of that. If you want a preview of that before it comes to the full committee. Great.
Ally?
Yes, so policy did meet last week, and we are planning to meet again on the 29th. So you can expect lots of fun policy updates coming soon to your folders. And Climate Action Committee also met last week. Just a heads up that they're planning a warrant article this year to increase membership on the committee, which will include the school committee member being leveled up to a voting member once again. So I know you're all going to want to take my position, but, but that will be coming in the spring. And they're very excited to hear about the buses and can't wait for further updates.
So we're having, I forgot to update you on that, April 17th, we're having a groundbreaking at the depot in terms of, breaking ground in terms of the building, the.
Charging.
The charging units for the three buses. So that'll happen next week, Friday at about 3:30.
Carrie? I have to put you on the spot here, but do you know how many resolutions we have this year for MASC for '25?
I don't know.
I was trying to remember how many we had.
There's a lot last year.
There wasn't last year.
Okay.
Carrie, stop doing them all efficiently.
I was just going to try and divvy them up.
Well, last year.
I was going to try and divvy them up for our next meeting, but I can't find it online.
I haven't seen it.
Oh, yeah, I haven't.
I got the book.
Oh, you did get, oh, actually, no, you're right. I did get the book, yes.
All I'm seeing are the ones that expire. Is that it? The ones that just, just the ones that expire?
Do you still go to Sherry and not to your house?
I, yes.
Yes.
Or I don't know. They don't come to my house.
So John, the MASC, they do send out newsletters and updates on some things. For some reason, some of ours go to central office and some go to close homes.
Interesting.
So I think the latter.
Do you get them?
Go to the office.
There are. Why don't they number them? They're not numbered. Oh, that's weird. Oh, one.
So you don't get them?
Yeah, they are.
Eventually.
But not at home?
No, not at home.
Is that a new thing? Do they not send it?
I don't know.
I get them at home, yeah.
Sherry tried to change it once and.
I feel like I normally get it at home, but I don't think I've gotten one this year.
Okay. One.
Sometimes the teenagers collect them at home.
One, two, three, four. Go ahead, Michelle.
All right, I had just two things. High school council met on September 24th. We had our first meeting. It was really introductions, overview of the role of the council, election of co-chairs and officers. And we went over the strategic plan and talked about upcoming meetings. So our next meeting is scheduled for October 29th. And then I reached out to Arianna, our student rep, about joint school committee and student advisory council meetings. We are required to do, have a meeting once every other month while school is in session. So Arianna and I came up with a schedule of meetings in order to not have to post them. We typically do them, like three members of the school committee go. So the dates are, and I can email everybody, I'll email everybody, and if you want to let me know which ones people would like to go to, there's one October 30th, December 4th, February 5th, April 9th, and June 4th. But I'll email everybody, too. And then if you want to go to a particular one, let me know, and then I can add you in. So, and maybe hopefully everybody can have a choice. They're on Zoom in the evening, 7:00 or 7:30. So I'll send that to everybody. And that was all I had for my reports.
Looks like there's eight resolutions, but they're not all numbered. So I will just email everyone an assignment of which ones to read up on, and then at our next meeting, we will read them all. So that's November, October 27th.
We sent a link to the full document for those of us who haven't received the bigger one yet.
Yes.
So there is, anyone so inclined, there's an MASC learning lunch on these resolutions on October 17th.
That's the link right here.
Okay.
So I will email everyone how to divvy them up, and then we'll go through them at the next school committee meeting.
One of the new married to.
No. Okay.
Just kidding.
All right. We don't have anything else for 48 hour, we don't have anything for 48 hours. Our next school meeting, like I just said, is October 27th at 6:30, and then on November 10th at 6:30. And then item 10 is to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session.
I will make a motion. I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session, session pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, for the purposes of approving minutes of the executive session held September 29th, 2025, and to conduct a strategy session with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, a public discussion of which would be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position, and to act as appropriate and if the chair so declares.
I so declare. Roll call vote. John?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.